I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, so that brings us to communications. Do we have any comments from the community today? Okay, just thank you. And we can then have roll call, please.
Jamie Allen.
Here.
Brian Dodson.
Here.
Ryan Flynn.
Here.
Keith Riedgenberg.
Keith Lawson.
Here.
Lucy Spencer.
Here.
Gary Chausson.
Okay, if I could get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as outlined. Second?
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That moves us into our superintendent's report.
Uh, yes, first up this evening, we have Craig from Navigate that is gonna talk us through the latest updates on Mark 20. Welcome, Craig.
Thank you. Okay, good evening. Appreciate you at Navigate Building Solutions. I'll be filling in for Matt and I tonight to talk about the Mark 20 construction update. Okay, so first, a brief agenda. We'll talk about the Mark 20 project update, then we'll talk about the budget update, and if you have any questions, I can do my best to try to fill in for Matt on that. So, construction schedule. So, if you haven't driven by, there's a lot of work going on. Abeyment's 100% complete. The demo work is nearing completion, so you can really see that through the breezeway and just starting to see that if you had a chance to walk through the existing school. The renovation framing and the mechanical electrical plumbing roughing is in progress. The slate roof restoration, this is a big value engineering item, is mostly complete, so that's gone really well, which is great news because originally we looked at just replacing the whole roof, and it was a big cost savings to just do a minor roof replacement that still provided the enclosure that the school needed while still saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's a great success story that we're excited about. The new addition concrete foundation is complete. The new addition masonry work has started. The site underground utilities are mostly complete. As a reminder, the substantial completion date is targeted for summer of 2024, which allows for the staff move-in to begin August of 2024. So, we have a few photos coming up. So, this photo shows a new addition storm shelter at the northeast corner. So, this is a big change when you're driving down the street and you're seeing Mark 20. Next is a new addition storm shelter, masonry scaffold. So, as I mentioned, the mason has mobilized. So, that's a hydro scaffold on the right-hand side of the photo up against the existing masonry facade. So, that's exciting to see a new trade come on site, which will start quickly changing the view of the school when you drive on the road. So, this is what I spoke about earlier, the demolition at the breezeway connector. So, this greatly changes the look of the building and will really help out with the connection of those two buildings once the future improvements take place. This is the east wall, the breezeway connector. The stairwell demo at the 1930 building. The demo completion at the Level 2 1930 building. As I mentioned earlier, the framing and the mechanical electrical plumbing work has started, so this is up at the Level 2 at the 1930 building. This is the demolition at the old library. And then wrapping it up on the budget update, so the post-pit budget had a all-in cost of 15.7 million. The current projected costs, after we did a lot of the value engineering items that I, one of the items was slate roof and there are a bunch of other items, were $600,000 roughly lower, so at 15.1 million. And we still have a good chunk of money for contingency and allowances, roughly over $800,000, which we feel is a really good amount at this level of construction. We always say that the biggest risks are when you're going through the demolition of the building and you're getting the building out of the ground. So, as I mentioned earlier, the demolition is complete. We saw the foundation and scaffolding starting. So, we still have some risks, but a lot of the risk would have been realized at this point because we just had exposed a lot of those things that could have been unforeseen conditions. So, with the amount of contingency we have right now, we believe it's a healthy level for the school district at the nature of the construction we're at. So, it was a brief update, but I can take any questions again. Yes, sir.
Now that demo has gone through, are there any other value-add things that you guys are maybe coming across that might be able to further save us money? You know, a lot of it was, hey, we're unsure because we don't know until we get in here whether we can do this or that. I'm just kind of wondering if you, you guys have found anything else to bring to us?
We haven't yet, because we did really deep dive to really come up with a cost, either from that 15.7 to the 15.1. But we're continually looking into it and as things come up, when we go into every single trade that comes inside, we start reviewing that. And, and we're gonna not leave any stone unturned, so we'll, we'll report back if we come across anything else.
Probably our best shot, Craig, is probably electrical, if anything, isn't it? I don't think, I mean, the plumbing's in pretty, pretty bad shape, so we don't, we don't really foresee that there's gonna be any savings there. We don't know about the electrical till we get behind the rest of these walls.
Sure.
So, just one quick question. So, any, any risk as you see is throughout the entire duration of the project? Anything that you guys are kind of getting held up on or things that you want to bring to our attention so we know now? That could risk the timeline?
Not right now. And, you know, normally, like, when we start demolishing things and we start like finding, you know, walls that aren't supposed to be there or, I mean, we have uncovered. I, I could go on and on for things we've uncovered. Also, with the, in fact, the foundations are all out of the ground and the masons get ready to start, that's a good place to be. So, I don't foresee any major things right now. We're gonna come across little small things, just by the nature of it being a school renovation. But I don't foresee anything that could really throw us off at this point based on where we're at in construction.
Oh, that's great. So, like inspections and things of that nature, they just, okay, you guys are clicking along?
We don't, correct.
Awesome. Thank you.
Craig, how about on materials? I know on our previous projects, it's always been a question, like, when materials are coming in and being ever available? How are we looking for that?
That's always a risk. The good thing about this project is when we selected a contractor, Brentwood's brought in a contractor, we even started construction for nearly four or five months. So, we had a contractor on board early 2023, but construction didn't start until right after school let out in May. So, what we were doing the whole time was getting material approvals and getting them released. So, we had a big jumpstart on those long lead items. So, we don't foresee any, any major issues with that. In addition, the market is starting to correct itself with the supply chain issues, so we're not having as many issues like we did even like a year ago. So, right now, we don't foresee any major issues. There's always a risk there, but we're in a better place than we were on previous projects.
Great, thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions for Craig? Thank you for the update.
Of course.
Thank you, Craig. Good night, good seeing you.
All right, I appreciate that. Next up, Major Hawkins from Brentwood PD has been kind enough to join us this evening. Major Hawkins has worked closely with the district for the last several years on all our safety and security measures, and we thought it would be helpful that you could talk to the board and the community a little bit about what some of those have been and then take any questions from the group.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Lane. I apologize, I don't have a hard copy of notes, so if I look down at my phone, I'm not texting. I know I'm a millennial, but there should be for something.
They're pretty boring, so.
Thank you guys so much for having me. We've had a lot of great stuff that we've actually collaborated with the school district on, and it's only continued to get better over the last several years. One of the new things that we started from the police department side, and everybody seemed to be really receptive to it. In spring of '23, we started daily school visits. And basically, that was having our patrol officers stop by every single one of the Brentwood schools every day, every school day that is. And it gave our officers an opportunity to go through the buildings and see some of the staff and to meet some of the kids. Gave the kids the opportunity to see our officers coming through, different than just the normal SRO, and getting them to see a bunch of friendly faces in uniform. It also gave us an opportunity for our officers to get a real feel of the inside layout of all of the schools. That's obviously pretty critical in the event we have a need to respond to an emergency at one of the schools and get somewhere quickly. We've started familiarizing the officers through this program with the layouts of each and every one of the schools. We will have a new SRO this year, starting fall of, well, just maybe a couple weeks, actually, less than a couple weeks. His name is Officer Amir Havigovic, and he came to us from St. Louis City Police Department after about four years. He is an exceptional human being, and I know that when you guys meet him, you're really gonna enjoy him. He is super excited about the opportunity. Dr. Lane has had the opportunity to, to meet and interview him for the position. He, I can't say enough good things about this young man, and he's looking forward to having a relationship as the SRO for quite a while. So, we look forward to him developing relationships with the kids as well and the staff and being an excellent liaison between our two entities. He's also gonna act as more of a juvenile detective on certain things as well. One of the things we ask of our SRO is not just to go into the school and make everybody feel nice, but to really pay attention to the kids and the issues that they're having. And if any follow-up needs to be done from a law enforcement or maybe a social services aspect, we ask that he take on that role as well. And we keep running documentation of what he does in that regard to make sure that we're not losing any, any touches of goodwill on anybody that may need just a little extra attention or some extra help for that matter. We did last year, I think, the first tabletop.
Yeah.
Which I hope we're gonna do annually, I think. We did a tabletop training on an active shooter drill at one of the schools with Dr. Lane, other school administration. We did it at the fire department here in Brentwood. We had a lot of our major stakeholders there. And if you're familiar with tabletops, obviously, it's just an exercise to run through worst-case scenarios and say, hey, what are some of our strengths? What are some of our, you know, challenges and where should we improve or what, where are we already doing really great? It went exceptionally well, and we look forward to doing another one whenever you're ready. Although I'm really busy until December, so if you're doing it until January, that'd be great. We also, the school district has been gracious enough to let us, after hours, use the school buildings, the school property, to do our officer safety role play trainings. And we do these trainings every other month, and they're pretty intensive, and we make them as realistic as we possibly can for our officers. And at least once a year, we do an active shooter training inside one of the school buildings after hours. And again, it helps our officers get the lay of the land of the school. And if anybody were to ever be interested in coming to one of those, I encourage you to. You can see how realistic it is for our officers, and we train on that very, very regularly so that our response isn't haphazard or delayed in any sense whatsoever. And our officers through that training are very, very aware of our expectations and their response for an emergency at the schools. So, we're very proud of that program and grateful that you've allowed us to come in and actually use the buildings themselves. It's invaluable.
Well, and it's invaluable to us as a district that, you know, the police department intimately knows our buildings. They've also, they've actually completed one of these already at the, at the new McGrath. So, the, so the better they know those buildings and the different ways to get around it and so forth, the better off we're gonna be and better served, so.
Absolutely. We were extremely impressed with the buildout of that, too. It, it was built really with, I guess, the 21st century issues in mind. And from a safety and security standpoint, it was extremely impressive to see that the thought went into that for the safety of the kids and the staff. And I would put that school up against anyone in the region because it is, it is top-notch, safety-wise, so. Just a brief overview of kind of what we have been doing on the PD side, working with the school district. So, any questions that you guys have?
Two. Do you plan on trying to get Red involved at all in the school district?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. I don't quite know what that looks like just yet. Um, he's a brand-new Red, so new guy, officer. Red Bull is his actual name. Yes, just like the drink. And if you think, oh, he's home, no, no, he is, he is his namesake. So, he, uh, we can't wait to get him into the schools. I think the kids of any age are actually willing to see him, and quite frankly, the staff. I, I do force him to come into my office every day when he's here, so we can't wait to. And if you guys ever need anything or want him to make any appearances for any school event or community event that you guys are participating in, please don't hesitate to ask. Absolutely.
And then, being familiar with the schools, is there any areas that you would recommend that we change our safety protocols to make the school safer? I mean, you guys are doing, you know, I'm just wondering if you're like, hey, we're constantly seeing an issue or this could be an issue and, I guess, to appease, you know, myself and everyone else that's in the district, if there's some areas?
Oh, sure. No, we've actually, we've been, we review probably every single year, I guess, for the operations plans and security plans for the schools. We kind of review those just to look over, make sure they're in line with best practices of what we see, and it always has been. That's not to say there's never room for improvement. This is kind of one of those things where, as we see the culture change and different trends in the, in the country change, we kind of have to change with it. But Dr. Lane and the rest of the administration has been extremely open to hearing, hearing about those things, making any improvements that we might suggest. But so far, so good.
Well, we learned a lot from that ta, I mean, the tabletop was great PD for us. I mean, you know, we were all taking notes, just little things. So, who would make, who would make this call? Who's gonna set up the communication? Who's at the reunification center and who's working down at the rec plex, you know, in that scenario? So, it was a, the big picture was good, but we learned a lot about just some of the little details to it that we then put into the plan, so that was helpful.
It was, it was incredible. So many school districts don't, some don't even have plans, which is pretty alarming to me in this day and age. But to sit down and run through a tabletop like that is extremely impactful because you get to see what little things might make an enormous difference, especially in our response, what kind of things might impede us getting there quickly. And we made a ton of progress with that, at that tabletop, so it was really good.
Brian, have, has the, the contacts for the tabletop been updated for this school year, or are they still all in place?
Have the?
The relevant contacts would be responsible for the steps on the tabletop?
Yes, we updated that last, at the end of last year.
And there's all still in place for the next school year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
We've gotten a couple of inquiries at these board meetings from a member of the public as to whether one resource officer for the entire district is sufficient, and why don't we, why don't we have one in each school building? Now, my understanding is, is that this is having what we have is in line with what best practices are. You know, any thoughts you have about that or assurances about that?
Sure. I'd love to say that there was a magic formula as to how many officers should be in a school, given the grade level or the population of the school. Having said that, there is no real magic number. But we feel very confident with the one dedicated officer that we have, especially because we instituted the daily school checks on top of that. For example, as well, last year, last school year that is, on April 20th, was the 20th anniversary of the cattle bombing shooting. And we had officers at every school every single hour. And I think every staff member was like, why are the police still coming by? It was kind of one of those things where, on top of the school checks, we wanted to make the extra effort to show a presence in and above what the SRO can do as, as one person. And to really let you guys know, we're going to be here at a higher level than just dedicating one officer and saying, hey, that's enough. I'm very hopeful that through that program, if anything were to ever come up or go south, that we would just increase our response time exponentially because of it. And best-case scenario, we end up preventing something because we have a higher presence in the schools.
Well, it just goes, I mean, just the way the times are, people are very, very sensitive about that. You know, 10, 20 years ago, nobody thought about it. And so, we have to figure out how to continue to reassure them that, that we're well protected. I appreciate what you guys are doing.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Anything else from Major Hawkins?
Well, that was great. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much. Really appreciate your support.
Can't wait to meet Red Bull.
Just protect yourself when you need them. Maybe bending over like this and just letting him come to you.
Have a great day.
Thanks.
All right, next up, we have Dr. Trip Hammer, and this is Lori Regent to tell us about our wonderful summer school program.
Okay, this is our, this is like one of the most exciting presentations we get to give. We are here to talk about our summer school program, and it was another successful summer. We're gonna spend most of our time, well, Lori's gonna spend most of the time talking about elementary summer school, and I'll give just a couple highlights of our secondary school. So, I think I need to stand up there to advance the slide. So, we're gonna hand it over to Lori, she's gonna talk about our summer program.
All right, well, thanks for having me. We had a great summer program again this year. We had the three programs run simultaneously. Go ahead, next slide. We have Jump Start, which is for our incoming kindergarten students, Camp Learn and STEAM Camp. Usually, Jump Start is a four-week program, but because of moving and all of the organization and craziness that was going on, we decided to keep it in line and with the other programs. So, it was three weeks, and it was from June 12th through the 26th. Jump Start again is that kindergarten readiness, so kids are learning what school expectations are for some of our learners. This is the first time that they're in a big school, at an elementary, so to speak. So, learning what it's like to be social and talk and sit and have circle time. And for our little guys, how do you ask to go to the bathroom, those kinds of things, as well as letter recognition, number recognition, writing, and some cooperative play. Camp Learn is a more traditional model where we have an hour dedicated to VLA services, an hour dedicated to MAP, and an hour for project-based learning, and then an hour for recess, snack, circle, community time, whatnot. And then STEAM Camp is our total enrichment program where it's theme-based on project-based learning. This year, the three themes, each week has a different theme. So, the first week was environmental biology. The second week was energy, think like forces. And you'll see some of the pictures there. We have everything from like solar ovens to wind-powered cars, some really great stuff there going on. And then the last year, we did a games unit where kids created their own marble runs or pinball machines or, you know, Pokemon trading cards of their own creativity. So, the two, the kids really loved all of those. So, go ahead, go into the next. This just kind of shows you how we had our enrollment the past three years since we've started STEAM Camp with it. Before this, we always had just that traditional kind of summer school model and Jump Start model. So, as you can see, our STEAM Camp numbers have really grown since we started in 2021. Our Camp Learn was really high last year. This year, it was a little bit smaller. And actually, our Jump Start number should be 16 instead of 15. I had a little bit of a typo there. So, Jump Start is also getting back to the normal size. And I think that 2022 is a small number because that grade level in general is a small class size for, for Brentwood. So, that's kind of indicative of the, and of the grade level.
So, Lori, can I ask a question? With the Camp Learn for the numbers this year, is that just, it, it went down, is it, because fewer kids needed Camp Learn or fewer kids were able to participate?
So, I was trying to think of reasons why Camp Learn went down as well. And I think, so in 2021, we came out of COVID, and I think a lot of people, we weren't quite sure what. I think we had more recommendations in 2022 to, because we saw that COVID slide for some of our students, and we really wanted to kind of pick them up and give those enrichment services to those students. And this year, it was very small, and I think we are getting to see that students really appreciate that small number because it's very much personalized. So, I don't know, that's what I came up with, but I can't say for sure that's true.
Thank you.
All right, so some, some of the highlights. At the end of the camp, we had a big project presentation day, and some of you were able to come to that. You got to see kind of our organized chaos of where the kids need to show off, like at Quasi Science Fair, some of their projects. And it's just so fun for me to see the kids so proud of what they were working on and what they've learned with their family and friends. We had 120 people come, and we had, what, a hundred? So, I'm very happy that it seems like almost every child had an adult represented there, which was fantastic. We had seen an increase in STEAM participants. I've told you this before, but it's 40%, so that's pretty large. And I think, based upon the comments that we see below this, where they either highly recommend or recommend our program to a friend, that it was a positive experience, and they said that they would come next year, it probably will continue to grow. So, that's something to think about going forward because it seems like it's very popular. Parents seem to like it and like the programming. The next part, what I have are some parts from the staff. So, what makes our programming so fantastic is our staff. This year, we had four staff return from last year to this year. And we even had, for the first time, we had three staff of Brentwood teach our STEAM camp, which was a first for us. So, it's getting, the word's getting out because it's a fun camp to work at as well as just to be a part of, so that was really exciting for me. And one of our returning staff members recommended the staff so much that she kind of recruited her instructional coach in her district. She's a teacher in a different district, and her instructional coach came and was a teacher for us. We had a teacher that was working on the National Board Certification, that was one of our teachers, and we had a Brentwood alumni. So, the three that weren't returning were high-quality teachers. And we just provide such wonderful programming for them because our staff is so great. And the staff has hours, and of course, they would like some more time for planning. We typically give them the Friday before camp starts. We have a staff meeting, and then we give them time to work in their rooms, make copies, start to plan, things like that. But during the week, the hours are about 15 minutes beforehand and 15 minutes after, and a lot of times they're at duty time. So, we are helping out with arrival and dismissal of the students so they don't have as much time during the actual camp to plan as they would like. So, they would like to have more time for that. And then just small other issues, they said it was hard to kind of communicate with parents because a lot of them, if they were not Brentwood personnel, had to use their own personal email, which we would like to look into in the future. And then we gave them about a $50 per person budget for materials and supplies. And as you can imagine, things like tape, marbles, we had some wooden cars, those kinds of things add up. And so, if we could just make that budget a little bit larger with staff, we'd, had said that that would be very appreciative. So, here are some just thoughts for the future. Right now, our Jump Start program is predominantly picked by our Brentwood Early Childhood Program and the parents' teachers. They kind of work combined and say, these are students that we see, that we see would benefit from Jump Start. So, how can we maybe grow that program to enroll anybody that would be new to kindergarten into it? We did have a waitlist for Jump Start because we wanted to keep the class size relatively small so that the students really get that individualized attention that we want to give them. Continue working with SSD for supporting our students. Our students who are on IEPs or have other special needs really benefit from this because SSD carriers come in and the kids get that access to the general education with some supports, and it's fantastic. So, definitely continue that partnership that we have. I think maybe perhaps merging Camp Learn and STEAM into one I think maybe perhaps merging Camp Learn and STEAM into one camp would be a great option going forward. We've had only three years and through that time, we've had made some changes. We've lengthened the time of STEAM camp and whatnot. And so this was probably just the next evolution of constantly looking at and evaluating the program. How can we continue to make it grow? How can we give every child what they need? And that might be something that we can look into in the future. And then also, how can we eliminate the waitlist? We did have about 10 families on the waitlist this year. So it's kind of a bummer when we can't have everybody come to camp that we want to because that's our ultimate goal is anybody who wants to come, let's let them have fun. So I, that's my.
Switch to Ms. Okay, thanks. I mean, needless to say, Lori has led that program for the last several years and has done just an incredible job. So kudos to you, Lori. Thank you for all your work with our elementary summer program. Real quickly, at the middle school, you know, we continue to try to find ways to invite kids to our middle school program. We had more kids this year than we have in previous years. We had 20 kids attend our middle school summer program. We had two teachers kind of working in tandem, kind of co-teaching this. And they, again, kind of like our summer program, they focus their instruction around some themes. Forces of motion, insulation and heat transfer, economics, surface tension and density. Heavy in that kind of science area because one of our teachers is a science teacher. So this is like right in her wheelhouse. So they did a ton of hands-on activities. And I think that's what contributed to the kids wanting to come to, I mean, they're middle schoolers. Summer school is not necessarily their, you know, most ideal thing to do. But if we make it fun and also kind of even some standards, we're gonna get them there. And I think that's what we saw this summer. So it was probably more hands-on in nature than it has been in previous years. So I won't read all those lists of activities that they did. But it was, I'm just trying to get the idea that it was a very hands-on, almost STEAM type of camp experience for our kiddos. They were able to go on a variety of field trips. They went to the fire department to look at career exploration, whether it's, you know, EMTs, paramedics, firefighters, reporters. So that was a neat experience for our kiddos to have. We took them to the Federal Reserve and they were able, there's a neat little breakout room that's based on economics. So that was one of the themes that they were covering that over the course of summer school. They went to Tillis Park. And I think the highlight for them is they went to Belle Fountain Conservation Area and they went fishing. And they looked at, you know, kind of, they were specifically looking at species of fish that were kind of driven to reserve. So all in all, I think the feedback that I got from the teachers was that the kids had, they had fun. They liked to think that they learned a few things along the way. And they're hopeful, we're knocking on wood here, that we'll increase the number from 20 to even more students next year. I think if the word gets out that you get to go fishing, you get to go do some really cool stuff and mix things, that might draw some more kiddos in. At the high school, looking a little more on the traditional side that we've done for the last several years, we used Launch as our kind of vehicle for instruction. We were able to have one teacher kind of provide that adult support during the month of June. That's that first session of, there's two summer sessions of the Launch, Springfield Launches summer program. So for that first session, we were able to have adult support for kids who needed that. Out of the 53 kids that took advantage of our summer school program, 10 were in credit recovery so they needed to kind of pick up some credits that they may have missed throughout the year. And then 43 kids took classes for just straight up credit acquisition. And I was looking at the list and I don't have it in front of me, but it varies from world languages to health, PE, personal finance. Those tend to be kind of the more traditional classes kids will take over the summer so that frees up their time in their regular schedule during the school year. The good news is, out of all those courses, we had 74 courses that our kids signed up for. And we passed 72 out of the 74. So it was pretty successful. We felt it was a pretty successful model. The only thing I would really want to look at perhaps next year is, we did have quite a few kids that took PE. And at some point, there is a break-even point, like if you have, I'm just guessing here, guys. If you have like 10 students in Launch, at some point, it becomes more advantageous for you to have your own PE program. So that might be something we want to look at if that tends to be a class that's highly sought out in the summer. But overall, Dr. Rayad leads that program and he was pretty excited about the progress that the kids made. And that's our summer school recap.
I have one more question. So Lori, for the waitlist of students for the elementary, is it just a staffing situation and not a?
We tried to limit the class size as well to no more than 17. We can't go on 17. So when I would try, when I would get the 17 or 18 per grade, I'd say, okay, this is definitely one grade full. And then we would kind of see how many students we could get. We tried to get the maximum number of students possible there. So we did some rearranging, some grade levels were like a 1-2 split, some were a 3-4 split, just so we can get as many students as possible in. And it just is what it is. Some grades were extremely high. So the, and it's hard to put, you know, if we have a lot and it tends to be more third grade to under. It tends, it's harder to put a fifth grader or a sixth grader in with first graders for STEAM. So we have to kind of do that balancing act that way.
I will say, when we first started this a few years ago, we were pretty tight, like 15 kids, that's it, no more, no less. And then last year, well, we let a, we let a few more in and then this year, we let even a few more in. We were really trying to, no one wants to see kids on a waitlist. And so we've been trying, but at some point, like Lori was mentioning, I mean, if you got 25 kids and you're trying to build rocket ships and stuff like that, that becomes unproductive.
Too much.
And so at some point, there has to be a kind of a breaking point where like, okay, this has to be our camp for it to be impactful for kids.
Well, and there's also the budgetary within reason of supporting classes. Then if you're breaking it down into three and you got three classes of eight or nine or 10 kids, then we get into, we get into that issue as well, is just what is the?
So we try to be as cost-effective, but while still getting as many students as possible. As you can see, we've grown and I don't think we've increased in staff. So we're really thinking creatively, creatively to get as many kids as we can. It's just more people are signing up because it's so popular, so.
So at some point, you may need to come to us and say, we need one more summer school staff person. Or, I mean, that would be the way to alleviate this waitlist if that's something we see continuing.
Potentially, for sure.
I do have a question, just inquisitively. How do you do PE virtually? I mean, I'm like, no wonder kids are wanting to do it. They're not having to run laps and they just have to take tests.
They're on a Fitbit and they do this all day long. No, they have a Fitbit that tracks their steps. They have activities that they have to do, physical activities. It's, you know, it may not be as intense as a teacher that's taking them out on the track and doing real live activities, directed activities.
So my daughter did Launch as well this summer and it was intense. So for that six weeks, she had her monitor, she had to log in, she had to, they really did, they checked her heart work, really was.
No, I was just kind of trying to, I was trying to, a lot of courses, you can figure out how to do virtually. I'm trying to like.
Heart rate, so we had a couple minutes, so it's hard to fix heart rate.
It is. Our daughter did it a couple of years ago because she's trying to free up her schedule for the school year and she got the most exercise that summer. I mean, it could share a requirement for summer.
So I mean, it's.
You can try.
It's kind of hard to, your parents throw dodgeballs at you or I guess you know. There is some, you know, flight or flight stuff you gotta learn in.
Which is why people try to do it in the summer.
All right, thank you.
I have a question on STEAM Camp. Are there opportunities for next year to be more flexible on timing? I know there's probably a number of students who may have not been able to sign up because of other commitments.
So we, we are looking at a couple of different models. Like I said, we're thinking of combining them. And so there are a couple of different models out there with different times for some of that. And it's also, we have to make sure the staffing is okay with that too. So that would be something that we would have to look at and think about. Our teachers have said that they like the times on it is. So if we change the staff, the times a lot, would we still get the same caliber of teachers and the same number of teachers? So those are things that we consider.
This week was truncated. If we talked, initially, we wanted also to have a four-week program, but because of the move with Mark Twain McGrath, we were kind of limited.
And BEC.
And BEC, forget that. We were kind of limited to that three-week window this past summer. So that, it's something to look at. I mean, other schools will run like a two-week, you know, robotics camp and then they'll run a two-week other kind of STEAM camp. I mean, there's, there's a variety of different models out there that might be engaging for our community.
I attended the presentations and those kids really enjoyed STEAM Camp and their activities, so.
Thank you for coming and it, they love it, they really do, so.
It's a good way to spend the month of June.
It is, it is. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for the work. All right, Dr. Trip Hammer, you're up for STL virtual program.
Okay, so we have, I think, an MOU that we need to update. If you recall, last year, I came to you and talked to you about the, it's another virtual option that the Brentwood School District is a part of. When I say we're a part of, we are a part of the governing board. We don't have any students currently participating in the St. Louis Virtual Campus. Last year, it was elementary only. We didn't have any, we didn't have any kids that wanted to do full-time elementary. So it wasn't really an option for us. We're now branching into high school courses where there's about 10 courses that we are, that the same, when I say we, we are a part of the St. Louis Virtual Campus. And so we're looking, these are classes that aren't always offered even in traditional larger high schools. We're talking like calculus III, higher-level physics, higher-level accounting, Chinese. So I mean, these are kind of one-off classes that a lot of schools just don't have the numbers for. So as a result of these high school courses, then the charge was to find teachers to teach them. And in the initial MOU that we signed last year, we were only going to select teachers that were part of the nine districts that are part of the governing board. Well, as it turns out, it's, it's kind of hard to find some of these teachers even within those nine school districts. So the updated language simply asks for us to acknowledge that we may need to look at teachers outside of the nine, the nine districts that are part of the consortium. For instance, looking, it's something like there's a teacher out of St. Charles County that might be one of the bills and a teacher that's in a private school right now. So completely embedded by the HR arm of the St. Louis Virtual Campus. But that's, that's the subtle little change that now in high school, it's hard to staff those classes with our existing pool of teachers. So we're looking to expand the pool of teachers that we can put into classes.
If I could have a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the resolution associated agreement associated with the St. Louis Virtual Campus program.
Second.
Discussion. Do we know if we have any high school students would be interested this year in taking some of these virtual classes?
So we gave the course guide, all 10 courses, to Dr. O'Brien, Dr. Tomiklof. So it's, it's available and just like it is for Launch. It's, it's another vehicle that our kids can tap into efficiently. But at this point, I don't think anyone has, I can check with Dr. Tomiklof, but I don't know that anyone has signed up yet.
Any other questions, Dr. Trip Hammer? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's approved.
Thank you. Next up, Alex is going to talk about extra pay, extra duty proposal to add the position of lead nurse.
All right, thank you. Yes, wanted to bring this to the board's attention. So we're looking to add an extra pay, extra duty stipend for a district lead nurse. It's not an additional position, it would be one of our, in my way of thinking, would be one of our existing school nurses that would take on some additional responsibility. And quite frankly, a lot of our nurses are kind of doing some things that are outside the purview of just running the health program for their one particular school, such as, you know, ordering EpiPens for the district. They're organizing the annual flu clinics. When we had COVID, we had, one of our nurses kind of was the point person to arrange that with the health department. So it's, there's just a, there's a handful of tasks that go beyond just running the school's clinic that we felt probably need to be recognized. And it's, I think we're looking at that salary schedule group age at a 2%. It's, it's not a whole lot of money, but I think it's a nice little recognition to say, we appreciate the fact that you kind of are doing a few extra tasks. One of the, you know, for instance, co-chairing the wellness, being the co-coordinator for the wellness committee with me. I mean, I don't know that I have the qualifications to be the wellness coordinator, but I am that person. So having someone with a nursing background might give me a little bit of pride. So I mean, it's things like that that go beyond that. What we're looking to do is just acknowledge someone that can take care of a few of these additional district-wide tasks in addition to the building level responsibilities.
I move that we approve the lead nurse extra pay, extra duty proposal.
Second.
Discussion.
So is this something we're seeing elsewhere? I mean, obviously, we, I'm assuming we've been taking care of these responsibilities to date. So is it other districts are doing this, like we're, what problem are we solving? Or the nurses have said, hey?
No, this is actually a conversation that Dr. Chambers and I just, a casual conversation, like, you know, I think I said, oh, I gotta talk to the one nurse about getting EpiPens. And then it was, oh, we gotta talk to that nurse about doing the flu clinic. And conversation became, well, isn't that, is that outside of the normal responsibilities of just running our demographic clinic? And like, well, it kind of performs a district-wide functions. And what was happening is a few, you know, some nurses would do this task, some nurses would do this. So it kind of streamlines all of the additional district-wide functions that we're, that we're talking about here.
And yes, most districts have a lead nurse. We just, we just have it in the best.
And then all the tasks that would be required at this position can be done by one person as long as they're on job.
I mean, like the, what I threw out, I was kind of joking, but the wellness coordinator, that would be, I would work kind of hand-in-hand with that person. Because there's, you know, there's some stuff on the administrative side that we wouldn't just totally place on, on the school nurse for that. But really, again, all jokes aside, someone with a medical background can really speak to wellness initiatives a little bit better than I can.
And sorry, just to follow up, in that extra, I mean, it's common with those other districts that the additional comp is handled through extra pay, extra duty, not additional monies on the hourly or anything like that?
That is what I'm used to. They would either do it on their extra pay, extra duty, or I've also seen some districts that might put X amount of days onto, onto a nurse's contract, which really amounts to six of one, half dozen of another, so.
I have two questions. Have you spoken with the nurses to see if one of them is interested in this position? And I guess two, have you spoken with them about, you know, people are gonna get their feelings hurt? Like while this might be extra pay, extra duty, you know, like maybe this person enjoys being, ordering the EpiPens or running the flu clinics and all of a sudden, you're gonna say, you know what, you don't get to do that anymore. We're giving it to this other person. I guess I want to make sure that if we're gonna pay someone to do all these things, that we're gonna make sure that it doesn't ruffle feathers to other ones and that these other people don't say, well, I'd like to keep doing that and, you know.
I would hope not. I mean, it's no different than a lot of other extra pay, extra duty offerings that we offer for teachers. I mean, that's just, it is truly extra pay, extra duty. And so, no, I haven't met with them. I'm actually scheduled to meet with them tomorrow. Kind of thought I needed to go down this road first before I even pitched it to them. I, they're a pretty good group of nurses and I don't know that they would overtly, you know, get their feelings hurt.
I'm not, you know, feelings hurt probably was the wrong thing, but some people like, you know, this is, this is what I, yeah, this is, yeah, territorial is what I was.
Well, and if they really want to do something, I'm sure we'll.
You really, really, really want to, the headlines cases will let you do it.
So is this a change of supervisory hierarchy for the nurses? Or do they still report to you? Do they report to you?
They still report to their building principal. This is just, it's a lead, my sister-in-law, I'm not touching you here, crazy story. She works in Link City, Texas, and that is a very large district. She is the district lead nurse. She doesn't have a building responsibility. She's in charge of all the nurses. Well, there's also, I think, there's 45 schools in that district. And so you need a point, a dedicated point nursing head nurse. This, this doesn't change the structure of evaluations or anything like that. It does give someone a point to, especially if we do have a new nurse coming on. It'd be nice to kind of partner this, this position with any new nurses that come on. It'd be nice to kind of partner this, this position with any new nurses that come on board.
Great. Any more questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that's approved.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we had our strategic planning consultants. Just to give you a quick background, we had put out the RFP for this. We had a, we had a really great results from that. We actually ended up having 11 companies that submitted for that. We then went through a process where we narrowed that down to three finalists. We then interviewed the three finalists. We did have three board members on that. So, thanks to Jamie, Keith Ravenberg, and Ryan Flynn for helping us out on that process. At that point, we determined that HYA, they're a company out of Chicago, Illinois, extensive experience in, in strategic planning, a team with a lot of experience and background were our finalists. But then after that, we still had a follow-up Zoom meeting with them to get some further questions answered and clarification. And then since then, I've also had one follow-up call and checked their references, including the Kirkwood School District, which gave them an excellent reference as well as the other school district superintendents I called as well. So, you'll see their proposal attached. The total cost upfront for this, it's $35,000. And then if, if you choose to include the strategic dashboard, that is just what it sounds like. They would help us design and they would host the strategic dashboard for us that would link to our website, which would show, you know, in terms of the action steps and in terms of the goals, what has been accomplished, what percentage has been accomplished. So, it's just a, it's a nice feature for the community to be able to take a look and see accountability towards what we said we're going to do. So, that's an upfront $10,000. So, it would be, the commitment here is for $45,000. And then we would have a year-to-year determination if we want to continue with that strategic dashboard at $10,000 a year. We have no, at this point, we would have no obligation under this agreement that we would continue with that actual.
I could have a motion to approve the strategic planning consultant.
Uh, I move that we approve engaging the HYA as a strategic planning consultant.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, we sat through three of the interviews. I actually ended up looking, I did not read all 11. I looked at two of the others that, in my opinion, was HYA presented really well. I think they even, the dashboard piece was excellent, but the process that they outlined seemed, that'd be very, very helpful, beneficial to us. Like the community engagement piece, focus groups and the team that they presented to us seemed to perfect. I believe they do an excellent job helping us navigate the process, so.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think they were incredibly professional in the way that they wanted to go out and reach, reach into the community and really get those thoughts and opinions back so we can pull, so they can help us pull together that strategic plan. I think it's going to be invaluable. Very impressed.
Really, they felt from a cost perspective, was it, were you caring, were you caring across the board?
Yeah.
The one, there was one that was, so Ed Plus was the most inexpensive, but just in terms of presentation and background. But HYA was aligned with the others.
I mean, I, I looked at it, if, you know, we could, we need to do strategic planning to comply with the state's requirements that we do that. And if that's all we were trying to do, I think this would be more money spent. The Ed Plus one would be perfect for that. But I think we want to try and accomplish more than the bare minimum to meet the. And I, and they really, this HYA group made me feel confident that they could do that.
We basically had one outlier, Ed Plus, that was inexpensive. We had another outlier that was over $80,000. And then the median was right in that, you know, mid-30 to 40 range for, for all the other candidates.
And their timeframe for doing this, is this all within the next school year? Will be completed?
Yes.
And we'll have a plan?
Yeah, in fact, I mean, a lot of it is, is ultimately going to be up to us how fast we want to move. But, you know, I believe, you know, five to six months.
Six months, yeah.
You know, they, they had a really, you know, to Ryan's point, a really extensive engagement process where they're committed to 15 different focus groups that would meet, so.
And you know, the other thing that occurred to us is, we talked, Alex and team do an awesome job with the C-SIP, right? And, you know, we see all the strategic plans. What was really grabbed me is, my attention is particularly from external stakeholders, is that scorecard that puts up, got me presented very professionally. And it is key metrics that our, our group through this process will identify that are important to us on a annual basis and they can change. And it's great, like, I think we should circulate, we can circulate. Like Kirkwood already has one that's standing, it's already stood up and it's great. You go through these focus groups, identify what's really important, we go measure it and it's out there for public consumption, so.
So, you like the idea of doing the dashboard, like signing on to that, right?
For sure, year one and let's go see. I mean, because it is, you know, it, it's hard, right? Like we go through this process and we get, we are checking all the boxes, as Keith said, but it's hard for us to have visibility to, right? We have to have a session where we come back and we get to see it. These really, you boil them down to what are the top five or six things and they're out there. They're data-driven, they're tracked and it's based on input from the entire stakeholder group, so.
Yeah, the short answer is yes. I mean, it's great because you point people to that.
Are they involved in refreshing it? Do they participate in loading the data?
So, part of that $10,000 is they would help refresh it and then.
There's some work they're putting in with that.
Oh, yeah. And even not just the data, but hey, do we need to change the metric, right? Like something changed all of a sudden, so they help you like, look, you were measuring whatever you were measuring, right? Now, maybe, you know, something else has started.
And I think they're going to do, they would do some training with us because we're ultimately accountable for entering, I think, said data, but they're accountable for maintaining and ensuring, you know, 100% uptime of, of that support. Right, yeah.
And I could see there might be a time down the road, whether that's year two or whenever, you know, if we come to the realization that, hey, we can host this ourselves or hey, here's another company that also offers something very similar for, you know, a lesser cost. We'll be open to that, obviously. But I, I agree that year one, it would be great to go through them.
Yeah.
We have the website now, so, at Kirkwood's website, so, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, it's pretty sharp.
Yeah, it is really, really sharp.
Great. Any other questions or discussions? Strategic planning? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that is approved. Great. All right, that leads us into our Board of Education, MSBA delegate reports. Anything, Keith?
Not too much. The Region Seven meeting is coming up, as you see further down on October 4th, somewhere in Ladoo. They haven't told us where in Ladoo.
Oh, they, they did. I can find it for you. They did have a.
You can go ahead and sign me up for that.
Okay.
Well, I kind of have to. And then also the annual conference, the first weekend in November, it's in Kansas City. It's always worth going to, but Kate already signed me up for that one.
I'll go to that one too. I'll give you big dates. I'll send you an email.
This is the annual meeting?
Yeah, yeah. The, the link there that is in the agenda about advocacy, advocacy positions. Just so you know, there's a committee, and I've never been on that committee, that goes over the official advocacy positions of MSBA. And then each year, they, everybody, and so they make recommend, this committee makes recommendations, but any member can also do that. So, it's available if we want to sit down and say, we want to change this advocacy position to say such and such, we can do that. And then it's all comes up for discussion and a vote at the delegate assembly in November. I'm not suggesting we make any changes to that. It's, it's a roadmap for our lobbyists to know what positions they can take when they're dealing with the legislators. And so, was it last year, Lindsay, that you got to?
Mm-hmm. Participate.
I tricked her into being the delegate.
This happens if you're the only two people at the conference, so you guys should come.
You know, and she sat through one of, I mean, most times these things have been very innocuous. And, you know, there might be one thing and it's clear that we, why the group wants to change it and it's not. And this one just kept cascading, yeah, but I want to change it to this and yeah, but it would end these people. It just went on, it was, it was awful. And I don't think it was Lindsay's fault. But hopefully, the point is, they will send out, there will be publicized what changes are on the agenda. And it'll be my job to make sure that you all know what they are so that whoever is our delegate, I am unless, you know, Lindsay wants to hear somebody else, would be voting in accordance with what our board thinks. And I'm hoping that it won't be anything controversial, so.
Well, the point of this, right, is, is if we as a board went through the current positions and didn't like or wanted to change or had a totally different position, we'd use the position request.
Yeah.
On behalf of the board, that it's not an individual.
Right, and it would, it would be into the mix and then, then somebody would have to stand up and say, this is a lie, explain it. And then it's going to be voted on. And there isn't a lot of that, as I said. Mostly it's the. But there, you know, you can read between the lines, maybe people were trying to sneak some things in that make it hard for. Well, I can't remember the specific one, but the lobbyist's position was if we just say our position is no, no way whatsoever on such and such issue, it boxes them out of being able to meet with legislators and try to cajole them into a position that, you know, gets some stuff that benefits what, you know, you know what I mean? If you just, if all you can do is say no, you got nothing to talk about. And so, and so, all these things are, are in play. So, that's more than what you want to hear on that. That's about all I got. Although, one, one more thing, I don't think I mentioned this. The MSBA has been given money by the state to start this student safety center school. I forget what it's supposed to be called. I think $3 million and it has to be spent in this fiscal year to get, to build this place. And so, there's a, a group from the MSBA board, and I'm one of them, I don't really know anything about this, but trying to get something in place to get it started. And one stipulation, it has to be within the city limits of Columbia, Missouri. So, that was some legislator needed that for some reason, which is a little bit, you know, I think it's going to make it cost more because there's probably some great places outside the city limits of Columbia, Missouri. But anyway, so that's something that's, it's, it's going to be potentially a pretty big deal. So, you'll be hearing more about that. That's all I have. I'll shut up.
Oh, that's good. All right, and we have the MSBA refresher training. Kate sent us a spreadsheet. I just pulled it up back in April when we needed to do our trainings by. And I did see there's also an in-person training for this at the conference in Kansas, in Kansas City. If anyone wants to go to the one-hour training. But I'm happy to forward this chart along to, should I just forward it to everyone again? So, no one is supposed to do your training?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Board committee updates. I know we're just getting into the beginning of the school year and, I know, we've all committed to meeting with our board committees in the first couple of months of the school year. If anyone has any other updates beyond that at this point?
Yeah, we probably just need to get those scheduled for, say, September, I think would be a good goal for all those committees.
Yeah, communications, yeah, we've, we got to get that one scheduled this fall. But, you know, being that it is back to school, there's been a flurry of communication that's been, that's been going out. You may have seen some yard signs for the middle school and also the elementary or the high school. Those will be going out, so thanks to those groups for doing that. We did see, talking with Tony, an opportunity there for us to kind of explore establishing more standards in procedures and brand standards as well to ensure that everybody's using, you know, the same logo and the same colors and we kind of have that same consistent messaging. So, that's going to be something that we're going to be working on this year as well. Let's see. There was a district-wide back-to-school checklist that was sent out along with some very specific building-level information as well, since we are going to be having two campuses in one, one location. So, be on the lookout for that. And then on the social media standpoint, you know, with, with the new school year, there's going to be pictures being taken. And if you have any, any social media accounts, if you want to tag your children on it, please use hashtag back to Brentwood on your social accounts. And then Tony's going to pull together like a, a gallery slideshow to put out there on the social media, so. Anything I missed, Tony?
All right.
And that's, that's it?
Reminder to, if you get a chance, we have our barbecue on Thursday evening from 4:30 to 6:00. And then immediately after that, if you have a child in school, you can head on over for the open houses. Apparently, it used to be a tradition many years ago in Brentwood, so this is our first year of bringing that back. So, we have 2,500 hot dogs. We're grilling all day.
I hope we're communicating this out to the whole community. Please, please come to our barbecue.
Yes, so, please come by and have one or two or multiple hot dogs.
That's good of you.
It's going to be fun.
So, you're grilling particularly yourself?
I'm going to be serving. I am serving. Chart rolls is going to help out with the actual.
Probably, I think, whatever's left over, we get a bunch of staff, admin, teacher, we do a hot dog eating contest.
Awesome. Okay. And then we have a list of upcoming events, so any upcoming meetings? I guess if anyone is interested to join Keith on October 4th for the MSBA Region Seven meeting, we'll let, let Kate know. And I think we have to sign up for the conference by the middle of October if people are going, exactly.
As soon as better, make sure. Get a ready.
Okay. Great. Can I get a motion to adjourn for closed session?
I move that we adjourn and move it to closed session for the reasons stated in the agenda.
Second.
All right, if you could have a roll call, please?
Jamie Allen?
Yes.
Ryan Dodson?
Yes.
Ryan Wood?
Yes.
Keith Schlosser?
Yes.
Lindsay Spencer?
Yes. All right.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Keep the meetings at the multi-purpose.
Ladoo High School, a multi-purpose room.
That's awesome.